Good morning and welcome to the May 10th Special Meeting for Fiscal Year 2223 Annual Budget Work Session of the Gates County Board of Commissioners. I am Dr. Ethy Riddick, the 2022 Chair of the Board. I am joined this morning by Commissioner Linda Hoffler, Vice Chair, Commissioner Jack Owens, Commissioner Ray Freeman, Commissioner Jonathan Cratter, and County Manager Tim Wilson. At this time, I ask Jack Owens to lead us in prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we are blessed to be here today, Lord, to have you in our presence. Lord, we thank you for this time, Lord, to be about the business of our county. And Lord, we just pray that you would be with us in our discernment and decisions and give us a good meeting. In these things, we pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
We need to amend the work schedule. Gates County School System has asked to be first, they have a meeting this afternoon. And then the Extension Director, Ms. Helen Uhl, wants to be last this afternoon. She also has another function today. So we need a motion to amend the work session schedule.
Second motion.
It's been properly moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
As had it. Dr. Williams.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Dr. Riddick, and County Commissioners. The administrative team, my Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Boone, would like to present to you the proposed budget for the Gates County Schools for the fiscal year 2023. Next slide. Please note that changes may occur based on personnel decisions, state, federal, funding, enrollment, employee benefit packages, et cetera. Those changes can occur. Next slide, please. You know, when we're developing our proposed budget, we always take into consideration the vision, the mission, and the goals for our school district with student success at the forefront and also safety for every decision that we make. Next slide, please. During the past school year, we have undertaken several improvement projects that I would like to brag on and let you know how well we're doing. But first of all, next slide, please. We continue to be involved in discussions with the North Carolina Rural Center of the Gates County and the Albomar Commission to provide planning and implementation of Internet across access to counties in the Northeast North Carolina. Dr. Riddick's been also involved with this and a major asset to making sure that we can get these things happen. Next slide, please. All I need is just one more meeting, and I think I can throw some money on the table for the County Commissioners to build a track. I may get something in the amount of $2.5 million to secure funding for an athletic track and a walking track for our community, something that is most needed. It's at the forefront of our interest for the school system. And we've also got other grant applications submitted to make sure other things that can happen too as well. Next slide, please. One of our greatest acquisitions this school year has been the implementation of the Navy National Defense Cadet Corps at Gates County High School. The program has quickly captured student interest and has a current enrollment of around 37 cadets. Next slide, please. The first adventure for the cadets was to the Navy Exchange in Norfolk to be outfitted for their uniforms. Next slide, please. Chief Howard and the staff at the Navy Exchange provided expert guidance to the cadets on their proper attire and fit. Next slide, please. And the cadets were eager to work with the staff to be fitted for their uniforms, which are worn at school one day a week. Next slide, please. One of our first public activities for the cadets was to participate in the Gates County Veterans Day recognition right here where we sit and stand. Our cadets looked immaculate and were precise in their presentation of colors. Next slide, please. The Cadet Corps has quickly learned the details and discipline of preparing for inspections. Gates County High School was honored to host the U.S. Navy Admiral Robertson and his team, who provided our students with information about preparing for future careers. Next slide, please. The cadets toured the USS Wisconsin, a decommissioned Navy ship in Norfolk, Virginia. And Chief Howard guided this tour for the cadets where he provided details of the operations of the ship and the history of the active service of the ship. Next slide, please. This spring, the cadets have represented Gates County and the school district at the NASCAR race at Richmond Raceway and at the Norfolk Admirals Hockey Game at Scope Arena in Norfolk. And many more things are to come for our cadets. This is just a wonderful program. Also to let you know, we've got about 25, 27, some cadets, future cadets at the middle school, eighth graders, who are extremely interested in this program. So this right here are the citizens that's going to be standing where I stand and sitting where you sit one of these days. Next slide, please. As our program continues to gain interest, you can see some things that we will have to acquire for our future cadets. And the need of supplies is vital for the 2022-2023 school year. And as you can see, sometimes uniforms, cadets grow out of their uniforms and they get those altered at no cost. And I do have a person that also helps with the budget piece on that. But as you can see from up here, there's a lot of things that we can do. And there's a lot of things that we can purchase to ourselves. But making sure that this program is top-notch, we want to keep this going and move forward with this. Next slide, please. Gatesville Elementary School has received a much-new shingled roof. The work began and was completed in the fall of 2021. We used this with our Esser funds, and I believe it came to about $584,000. We were under budget, and Mr. Green supervised the project and did a really good job. Next slide, please. I've wrote grants to the amount of around $203,000. We're putting a fitness facility, which will be open to the community at the high school. And these funds are allocated solely for the, we call it the Gates County Health and Fitness Facility Project. As you can see, there's all kinds of weights. We've already purchased weights with a grant that I wrote for $50,000. I wrote for flooring grants for about $35,000. And so we'll acquire this fitness facility that will be available to everyone, every citizen. Next slide, please. Probably one of the biggest hits we've had in the school system in the fall of 2021, we purchased the establishment of something called Smart Mouth Pizza as a food choice for our students at the high school and the middle school. In January 2022, the first pizzas were served at the high school and about a month later at the middle school to our students and staff, and it is a huge success. Students are raving about the delicious pizza. And we got additional menu items that I think kids will just love, which is cheesy bread with all those different dipping sauces and calzones. So when you walk into our cafeterias or you're in the hallways, it smells like a food court when you're walking up and down. So kids love it, we enjoy it, and I'm grateful that we received this. Next slide, please. Wait before you hit play. Will you be able to hit play? We would like to add a fire academy to the high school curriculum. I've got my Assistant Superintendent behind me who can help with this most definitely. We've got some firefighters who are, I'll say, have a lot of wisdom and maybe up in age a little bit. And I think our firefighters need some assistance. And we've got some kids in our high school that most definitely would like to be involved in the firefighting program. I'd just like to show you just a little video clip of how exciting this fire academy can be.
Wow, he's getting that right for us. Very, the ACHS is where, where's that?
That's Almans. And this is, they have a firefighting academy, Prequemence has a firefighting academy. So this is what they do. I'd just like to emulate kind of like when I did the Navy cadets. We got that from up at, I believe it was in Norfolk, Virginia, at a school. And I showed you a picture of what those cadets look like. So this is really neat. If the sound comes in, you'll really be impressed.
And Jack, that's Almans County, High School Day, Almans.
So I think that's real exciting for the kids. I see, you know, when I first got here, I noticed some kids had some pagers on their belt. And if the fire would go off, they were just itching, knees was going up and down, wanting to hurry up and get to the fire if there was an alarm there. So I think this would be really cool if we could acquire the funding to get this. With that being said, I would like for Ms. Jordan and if Dr. Boone would want to as well, but Ms. Jordan would do personnel.
I don't know how Dr. Williams always manages to get the fun slides, but that's okay. I don't have any exciting videos, but I am here to talk about the heroes that walk the halls of our schools each and every day, the personnel piece of our budget presentation today. Next slide. Here you have our projected vacancies for the 2223 school year. We do have quite a few retirements this year. And as you see at Buckland, we don't have any, but at Gatesville School, we have two. Overall, we have approximately 12 instructional vacancies that we'll be looking to fill for the 2223 school year. Like I said, most of these are retirements that we have across the districts in each of our schools. Next slide. Here you have the additional personnel instructional requests. These requests do come from our principals at the schools each year. They sit with finance and personnel just to talk about the needs in their schools and the projects and things that they have or would like to complete in their schools for the following year. So we have those at each school. A lot of schools are requesting additional storage and space for things in the classroom so that they can expand instructional space for students in the classroom. We also have our district request as well for different things we would like to do with behavior support and coordinating those services for our students across the district. Next slide. Here you have our 2122. These are the current class sizes at our elementary schools. This is grades K through five, our three elementary at Buckland, Gatesville, and TS Cooper. These are the current class sizes and student teacher ratios in each of those buildings. And next year, we are projecting enrollment to be about the same for the 202223 school year. This is just a comparison for those same schools, those same classrooms. We are projecting to have the same number of teachers in each school or would like to continue to have the same number of teachers in each school for next year based on student enrollment and projected enrollments for next year. Any questions about that part? All right, next we have New Beginnings Daycare. As we know, New Beginnings Daycare with the leadership, under the leadership of Ms. Donna Christer, provides a great service to our staff in the schools and to our community. And right now, I think New Beginnings may be the only childcare daycare facility here left here in Gates County. Our funding request for next year for, well, for New Beginnings Daycare, due to the increase in minimum wage, January 1, there was an increase, well, July 1, but we implemented an increase for our employees on January 1, $13 an hour, and that will increase to $15 an hour July 1, 2022. And just based on those state changes, we are to ask an additional funding request of $79,000 to meet the fiscal year 22 requirements. And then $119,000 to meet the fiscal year 23 requirements. And that's based on the salary increase for our employees effective July 1, 2021. Any questions about that? Thank you.
You know, as I said at the very beginning of the presentation, safety is number one in our school system for our students and our staff and everyone that works in the school system. Next slide, please. My Director of Student Services, Mr. Jeremy Wright, he wrote a grant and received the grant, awarded $164,000 to install cameras in our school system in every, in all the schools and departments, inside and outside locations. He's also has metal detectors, which will be purchased too as well for entrances into our middle school and to our high school. We will just need to have the continued support when we write grants for our SROs. And the SRO is an important component of the school system. They make things go and they help us with all that they can do. Mr. Smith, would you please come and talk about technology? Next slide, please.
Good morning. Hope you all are doing well.
Good morning.
With technology, we've kind of got this group, each line, got the common items group. Smart boards, we're looking at upgrading those at several schools. They have come down a lot in price. Originally, they were anywhere between four and five thousand. For the old ones with the projector, now you can get the ones that look kind of like that and hang on the wall for like $2,600. So they've come down a lot in the last two or three years. So we're looking at doing those at several schools. And we'll be looking at upgrading as need be at all the schools. Chromebooks, you know, we were able to buy a lot of those with Esser funding, of course, the county helped us with a lot of that too. So we're very appreciative of that. We'll be looking at purchasing more as we head more toward, you know, one-to-one in the classrooms. iPads, we've got some requests for some of those as well. They're mainly used at some of the lower levels, the lower grades. Chromebooks really don't work it quite as well, so we're looking at those. Desktops, we're continuing to update desktops and laptops as we get the opportunity. Telephone systems, we're looking at that. We'll start to also look at, you know, updating the whole phone system period in the next couple of years as that's really outdated. And then finally, computer labs at each school, we need to update the, these would be the desktop labs at each school. Start working on updating those. And any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner.
No, I have the boring part. Everybody else gets the fun part. I just have some numbers for you. Do you all have copies of the budget request booklet? Do they get copies of those?
The budget.
Dr. Williams is giving me copies for you all. I don't know if you, I'll just give them to you, and if you don't need them, you can.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. That booklet goes through fund by fund, the different requests and the different budget proposals that we have for next year. The slide that I have for you is the additional funding request. And it's in the local page of the booklet that I just gave you. But the snapshot that we have here kind of goes through the main points of that for the local funding request. So the current year, we've actually budgeted about $482,000 in fund balance appropriated. In order to continue our budget at the same level with no changes, it would take about $510,000 for next year. We have some one-time grant funding that will go away. And we had some one-time purchases that will go away. So if we balance that all out, it's about a half a million dollars. As you know, the state, every year, has their benefit increases and then the salaries. Everything is going up to a $15 an hour minimum. They've projected a 2.5% salary increase for everyone. The retirement rate is going up just over a percent. And our hospitalization will go up almost $500 per year per employee. All those together for what we will not be funded through state funding will be about $216,000. The reduction that's listed next is to absorb a position through attrition, which will save about $76,000 next year. We have two grant-funded nurse positions that we would like to continue. That's about $152,000 per year. The board member compensation increase was the first one, I think, in ten years, what you had said. So that's in there along with some small increases that were requested that the board had determined that we would like to provide. So the total increase is a large number, $855,000. And that will allow us to provide these things without appropriating any fund balance for next year. Are there any questions about that? That was all I had for the local fund. For the community center, I think there was a slide before this. Maybe next, is it out of order? There's one that has some budget numbers on it. That one, okay. The projected budget shortfall for next year is about $27,000. And the bulk of that is due to the state mandated salary and benefit increases that we've discussed also under the local fund. One of the things that we've talked about is possibly increasing the fees for the fitness center. They're at $20 a month, and it's been $20 a month, I believe, as long as that center has been there. We've not done anything with that. The board has discussed it, a decision's not been made because we know we're getting ready to move into a pretty major renovation project. And we kind of thought that maybe we would look at that after. The slide was before that. There was also a list of the additional needs that was provided for the community center. A few of these have been taken care of this year. But there's an additional listing in the budget request book that I gave you that has these anonymized with the estimated costs of things that we know need to be done. Some of these I know will be addressed with the grant funding, the things that we're talking about with the renovation project. But these are things that were identified by Mr. Raby and Mr. Green as projects that need to be handled there. Capital Outlay. This was the budget request for Capital Outlay. There's some details on the next slide that Dr. Williams will go over with you. The current funding, I believe, is at $200,000. And in order to address the additional needs, the total needed is $2.87 million. And again, the details will have to be handled by someone else, so I'm the numbers person. And that is all that I have. Are there any questions? I know that was a lot of information that was doled out. Thank you all.
Next slide, please. These are the, down in the weeds, details of our capital outlay. Last week, we were awarded from DPA a needs-based grant in the amount of $1.78 million for renovations to Gatesville Elementary. This will encompass the $200,000 that's indicated up on that table that you see on the television. We have submitted four grants for the high school, for Buckland Elementary, for TS Cooper, and Gatesville. And that totaled $16 million. The three that were not awarded, that will be resubmitted in July because there's $153 million back on the table for capital outlay for school districts across the state of North Carolina. Next slide, please. Our budget is comprised of funds from the federal government, the state, and the county. County Commissioners vary throughout North Carolina based on our local taxes. You know that as well as I do. But we're continually working to receive grant funding for our programs and our facilities. We're doing everything that we can to help you to help us. And just this year, we've received anywhere from a total of $2.5 to $2.75 million in grants that we have submitted. And I think the slide shows you, it's all about building relationships with students, with citizens, with families, with educators, with colleagues, with entities. And I think that building relationship has five components. It's developing trust with your colleagues. It's maintaining consistent communication. It's showing appreciation and respect for others. It's speaking well of your team members, and it's also being positive. Next slide, please. In summary, I would just like to thank everyone for their efforts in the establishment of the Gates County Schools' proposed budget for our Board of Education for the fiscal year 2022-2023. And we are graciously requesting the full funding for the Gates County Schools' budget for fiscal year 2022-2023. Thank you. Last thing I'd like to tell you is I'm a positive person, but I'm under the weather, but I am negative, if you know what I mean.
Does anyone have any questions for the superintendent before he exits?
Does anyone have any questions for the superintendent before he exits?
Thank you. We'll be in touch. Next, we're going to have customer service, Diane Hendricks.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Customer service, the budget request, as I see, has been reviewed. And everything that I asked went through. The county should be getting some proceeds this year because of the reduction, this current fiscal year reduction in postage, since we went to every other month billing. So that's a savings there. Basically, out of this current fiscal year, there'll be a five-month saving in salaries since we have been short-staffed. And so that should go into fund balance or however the finance department is going to shift that around. But as for next fiscal year, salaries and benefits are handled by finance. But my requests for expenses, as I said, were minimal and were recommended by the board, by the finance department and the county manager. So unless you have any questions about my expenses.
How is it going with the new billing every other month? Do you have a feel for the savings, like a report?
The savings for the billing process is going very well. But the billing itself, since we are short-staffed in my department and utilities has been short-staffed, we are estimating 94% of the bills. And the bills that are getting ready to go out that we're working on right now, these customers will have six months of estimated bills.
Could you say that part again? Six months of?
Estimated bills.
Estimated bills. Estimating what?
Okay, excuse me. Not actual.
No. The two of us and the department are going through each one of the accounts. That's 2,100 each month. And there are some that we cannot estimate if you've had a leak. If you are a new customer, are you a household of one or you have a household of six? So they have to go out and actually read those. The schools, farms, you know, we cannot estimate those. And so the utilities department that has consisted of until Brad came on board, we had our lead person and our sewer person, and they have been fantastic to work with. They have worked great with us with going out and doing our board work. And of course, there have been issues with the plant and leaks there, but I cannot commend them enough for the way they have worked. But as I said, on my department, for the two of us, estimating bills has been quite interesting.
I do see in the budget where we are planning on hiring another customer service representative.
I was told a couple of weeks ago, we had some applications in. I sent an email last week asking for the status, and I haven't got a response back from that. But the one person that we had to come in with us, we were half-staffed, half of November, two of us there, December, January, February, March, fully staffed, lost a person the end of March. So April and May, there's only two of us there. And the new person that came in, she came from the tax department, and she's been fantastic, very astute, picked up very quickly, great with the customers because, of course, she knows our customers because she's dealt with them in tax. I cannot say enough about that. It's just being short-staffed and having to actually review each one of the 2,100 accounts.
So, okay, I know you're short-staffed. So I haven't heard a report of the uncollected bills that we have on the books, you know, that we can't collect them or we're supposed to collect some of them. I think the statute of limitation has gone.
Right. Finance has been working with those. I know for the uncollected ones. Are you referring to water or are you referring to landfill?
Water.
For our active accounts? We haven't been able to disconnect because of having only one person, but the accounts have, are being paid.
But we have hired a new water supervisor.
Director.
A director. And how many more bigots are in the water department? Okay, so you are a staff of one?
Two.
Two. Okay, so you have three. And so you still have three more positions to fill?
Four.
Okay. Okay. And do you have any applicants?
I have done a point review so far. Hopefully, one more this week.
So you're looking to get up to full staff as quickly as possible?
Yes, ma'am.
And then, of course, the meters will be read and we'll have actual numbers?
Yes, ma'am.
For that.
Mr. County Manager, I know, I see Brad. I met him the other day. Like, I didn't recognize when he came in, but he said, "That's Brad." Okay. And I know you've been trying to staff up. I know he just hit the ground running, and I know he's running fast because we have some issues with our water, and he has to resolve those. But I would like to see a report of his staffing as far as how that looks. So we ensure that he has what he has, all the resources he has in that department so that we can get our water and wastewater under control. So next month, with this June, the June meeting, we will not have a report of where we are as far as all the issues we have about water and wastewater. We've given letters of, we know we're in distress, it's in the paper, designation and other things that are going on. So we would like to have, if we can, Brad, with Brad on board, a comprehensive report of where we are with our water and wastewater so we'll be aware of where we are and what's the remedy. What do we have to do? We would like to see that in writing, see your staffing in writing, how you got, how you are organizing your staff. So we make sure that going forward, we have water and wastewater under control.
Something else we need to keep in front of us, if we're just estimating the bills, at some point in time, the bills are going to have to be called up.
Oh, they're going to have to be called up.
So we probably need to come up with a plan on how, I mean, I know sometimes people are tight with the dollars in the community. So we need to have a plan also, how we're going to work with them to get them called up.
Of course, also, it could have been that we might be overpaying, some of us might be overpaying.
Might be overpaid.
Very unlikely. I don't know. Never know. I mean, it could work both ways.
Yes.
I think we need, Mr. County Manager, I think we need a policy or something. I don't know what that something is as far as those uncollected, cleaning that stuff, cleaning those bills up that we have not been collecting. What is the threshold for, before we write it off? And that needs to be in writing as far as what's the threshold that we write these bills off that are uncollectible so that we know where we are as far as requiring people to pay, to pay up? We're not going to continue to have, you know, this just laying out there, that's money on the, on the.
Part of that's my, that's our statute, I mean, a policy that's actually statute.
Whatever it is.
And I can provide the board with that information. You have so long to try to seek collection. And after that, you know, there is a statute of limitation on how far back that can go.
Okay. And of course, when we get fully staffed, we can go back to, if people don't pay, that, you know, water gets cut off. Yeah, but that's the present to the future, I mean, on the future.
Yeah, I would say some of it is on us. Because we're not providing the services that we're supposed to provide.
Brad, I hate to keep talking to you from the table, but, Mr. County Manager, I would also suggest a water rate study for this county. Because as we build out and get the water, you know, where it's supposed to be, we have to sustain it. We can probably get grants to help us as far as repair and renovation. But then you have to, the grant runs out. Then we have to make sure that we can sustain with the fees we charge. They don't want to hear that. But we have to upgrade this system. It's going to cost us millions. And there are grants out there to help us. There are people in Raleigh to help us. But once we get it straight, once we get it, you know, operational, we're going to have to sustain it. So a water rate study would give us, give the board insight into what needs to happen going forward, not just repair it. You repair it, but then you got to sustain it. So, County Manager, that's another to do on your list, water rate study.
Reliable. I would say that that would be linked directly to, and as discussed with the board, that the county has very limited wastewater capacity. And as far as the decision on how much capacity or what type of treatment in it, how many gallons per day that the county wants to develop and install a system, that's going to have a major impact on what we should set our rate at to try to cover the debt service operation cycle for that. So I think that that would probably, you know, that's something that we've discussed that we already know that we need to do that. I think that that would be critical information in trying to determine what the actual rate would be, knowing what type of system that we were proposing to, to try to design and construct and operate. And I can, and there are two things with the utility department that I've already discussed with the new director. There's really two issues, I think, of major importance. One is there is a need for reorganization of staff and primarily to create some mid-management or supervisory level positions. With these positions, the persons holding them would have certain certifications so we don't run into the problem that the county just recently has been going through that, you know, we had one person who had all the necessary certifications to try to divide this either to a water and a wastewater division and the respective heads, that mid-level management, those people would have to hold positions while the director, Brad, I mean, he helped in both. So that would cover in that type of situation. And one other thing that would have a very, I think, positive impact on just the level of staffing that would be needed is also looking at the remote reading of the water meters. And because that would create a very great time-saving in terms of just not how long that process takes, but it also, not just for the utility department, but for the customer service department, but errors and transposing numbers from the field, from the field into the data, that it becomes much more efficient. And I think that would be, I mean, well-invested to put in. So I think those are two major things that need, I can give a report on our current positions and our current staffing, but I believe that there are some, two very important needs on that. One is some mid-level management in that department so we don't have a situation of one person holding all of the necessary certifications. And second is the use of technology to make that department much more efficient in terms of dollars and time spent. And I think the investment in the remote system, I think you would find that it would pay itself off in pretty short order.
I've been reading about the water situation. When the county manager gets a letter or an email from the state, I get one as the chair. And so I've tried to educate myself, what does this mean? So the thing, the three things I keep reading about is organization, finance, and environment. Those are the things they look at. I see Brad saying, yep. And so it's mandated that we do, we address organization, finance, and environment as we address this water wastewater system in this county. It's not one-size-fits-all. And they have what they call a scoring criteria, and you get points. And if you don't get enough points, you're in trouble. And that's why we're in trouble. So we got to look at that point system and make sure that when we're doing our water, wastewater, we got organization, finance, and environment. And so we can get our wastewater and wastewater up to par in this county. And we're not the only ones. I'm saying, you saw it in the paper, it's a list of, you know.
Eaton just got the letter.
Yeah, they just got their letter. So it's not just Gates County, but our system is so old, and we have to upgrade it and for future, not just, you know, do something now, but look at the future of this county. So as I've educated myself, by trying to figure out what's going on, because when I get those letters, I'm not pleased. Tim's not pleased either. And I'm like, what is this? And so that's why I try to educate myself so when Tim is talking or Brad is talking, I know what they're talking about. And you can go online and you can see it for yourself, what's needed for us to get this system up to par. And they are serious about this. You know, quality water is number one. And so wastewater expansion is number two. So I just wanted to say that. So Brad is new, and we support you, work with the county manager, and he'll make sure we got the resources you need so we can get this water wastewater under control. But it's organization, finance, and environment. Those are the points that they look at when they put you on distress. It's not just the water.
And we've got to come more efficient all across county government. I mean, you know, we can't hire enough people. I mean, that's very expensive. We need to be more efficient. With technology, you can be more efficient.
Do more with this.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you, Diane. I appreciate it. I used to look at the corporate world.
Now that we've discussed me and utilities, any questions?
Nope.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Buildings and ground, building and grounds? Ms. Crystal?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Right now, I'm pretty much pleased with the way my budget was submitted. Right now, I don't have anything to ask for other than my positions, you know, from a part-time to full-time instead of just a part-time. Have enough time, have hard enough time trying to find anybody to clean up, period. But maybe in the future, if we do have a little bit more money or whatever, I would like to bring the part-time back in once, you know, because we do have 11 facilities that we do clean up. And we have a lot of people in, certain departments are requesting more work to be done, more cleaning. And I can't knock them because all of them have been very patient and, you know, I had a few that had complaints, but they have truly been good to my department, and we appreciate it. Because cleaning up, I like my stuff to be thorough, cleaned thoroughly. But when you don't have the resources, you can't do it all by yourself. So like I said, that's my only thing that I have problem with employees.
Any questions?
And I'm trying to manage in all my, I try to stay within my budget, and I hardly ever go over my budget and, you know. But the cost rising and everything, I'm hoping that I'll be safe with my vehicle maintenance and gas or whatever.
Well, we all, gas, it goes up every day.
I know.
Who knows what the future will hold?
Cost of living has gone over my head.
I know. I know. I would just like to say that since the county manager hired the new lawn care company, I haven't had another phone call about the grass. That's a good thing.
Yes.
I have not had one.
I have not had one, not one call about the lawn care in this county.
They have done a great job.
I think you've chosen a company that really is doing the job that we hired them to do. I just wanted to say that when I was looking at the budget and everything, you get what you pay for.
That's right. I say it all the time. Um, I do apologize for stepping out, the people were out putting the concrete down for the monument.
Thank you. Gets.
Is it, I mean, the cement people here? Great.
Pat, okay, we'll move right along. Telecommunications, Jason, Sample.
Telecommunications, and that, I don't seem to want to know.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, when it comes to telecommunications, not really much has changed in there from the last year other than that's going to have, I mean, it still falls under the merchant management regulations. They have their own line now also, just with like the 911, that's new positions because it's being branched off. There's going to be a little extra money in there for training because we're going to be, you know, the dispatches are coming in, we're going to have, make sure they have their condo training going on. Uniforms is something we're looking at. So, everybody will have, you know, professional appearance.
Are you fully stay up in telecommunications?
I might have three full-time positions open right now, still.
Full-time?
Full-time.
Okay.
Said three.
Yes, sir. We just hired a new one for a full-time, so that gives me three positions right now.
Three out of high men total.
I believe we have 11 total positions right this second in there. That includes a supervisor position.
How's your equipment going? I know you ordered more equipment or?
We've ordered what we could right this minute, everything's kind of on hold just because of the way electronics are nowadays. But as things come in, we will be ordering as soon as possible.
Any questions for Mr. Sample?
Radios are on order, you know, those have, y'all approved that, so those are on order. I know the next couple of weeks, the sheriff's going to be doing his programming. He's waiting on some responses for some surrounding counties. I'm having a meeting on the 25th with the fire department EMS about how they want their radios programmed, so we can go ahead and give that information to Mud River, so speed up the process hopefully.
You know, instead of asking for reports, I would like to see, say, maybe a two, four, five-year plan for E911 on what equipment we're going to upgrade this year, where could we get the funding from, or slight cost analysis, just a plan.
Okay.
You know, to get it completely updated where we need to be as far as, you know, computers, making sure all the computers are working, desks are working, just a plan.
Projection.
Projection.
Okay.
So, right now, everything in that, piece of, is going to be new.
Everything in there, yes, is going, it's going to get a makeover.
Okay.
The whole, everything, monitors, computers, everything.
Have useful life.
Yes, past use. Expectations of when, I know we can't do it all at one time, it would be astronomical.
Yeah.
So, just a plan, what we're going to do this year and next year, important, most important to the least.
Yes, sir, okay.
That's what I'm saying, it basically, and I think, you know, it does need to be done so we don't hit, you know, so many years and then a huge bullet is trying to get some staggering. I think more plans, rather than a replacement schedule is what you're looking for.
Yeah, a replacement schedule.
Replacement, because everything has a natural life.
That's right.
And some, so that, like you say, it's be staggered over years.
Yeah, and then we can take that and keep moving it out and just keep everything updated and won't hit us all in the pocket at one time.
Well, with everything being new, should be pretty easy to do.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Everything starting new, and unless, unless technology takes another leap.
And that will.
That could change.
It will, yeah.
I mean, roughly everything, electronics is, you know, five years, you know, 10 years at the latest. So, I'll get the, I'll get the reports for you then, we're going to stagger it out.
Just kind of a cost analysis and maybe where we can get the funding from or a grant or.
Also, it would help you if, you know, with grant possibilities, you say, oh, well, look, next year I'm going to need this. Let me start seeing if I can find a grant that'd help with the cost.
Yeah, but if the life of everything new, just to go back over there, if everything's new and the first thing that, even close to life, let's just say it's three years, you can't be looking for a grant for anything like that three years down the road.
No, no.
Oh, yes, sir.
But I mean, if you had a list and you knew what was coming up, like the year before or whatever.
Okay. I'll get those for you.
While you're up there, I see emergency management.
I got three spots. So, when it comes to the emergency management, the only thing I've really increased was just, because everything else in the country's gone up, so memberships have gone up a little bit. Lodging is doubled, I do have, you know, Conde, I have to do just for inspections and fire investigator. So, and EM, you know, you have to travel to go out of town for most of those classes. So, I did, you know, make a little adjustment on those. I am requesting a second position for emergency management. Gates County Emergency Management is one of the only emergency management counties in the area that has a lot of responsibilities under one title. So, again, you know, I oversee the 911 director or the EMS administrator, you oversee the volunteer fire departments. You know, then you do your EM job, then you have fire inspector, fire investigator, fire marshal, I'm on call 24/7, 365. So, it would be nice to have a second position. I know in the past, there was a second position. So, I would like to request that second position to come open again. Just, it's a part-time position to help out with, you know, fire inspections. And if I have to go out of town or they go out of town, then somebody's here in the county to help respond to calls.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Sample?
Um, as far as that report, you think we could get about the next meeting on the meeting after, hey, what would be the timeline as far as projection summary? Not the next meeting, not next meeting, June, July?
Replacement schedule?
Yeah, replacement schedule.
I mean, I can try to get to you in June, if not, you know, I definitely have to get you by July.
That's fine, thank you.
Not having by the beginning of the fiscal year, so June.
Our June meeting's going to be later because we're going to probably have the budget and all things to continue.
And then with the second position, if it did get approved, I mean, I would have to possibly look into another vehicle because the one that's out there now, hopefully, is going to be going up for, you know, auctions soon. Because it's not very reliable. Everything else is pretty much going to stay the same for emergency management.
Okay. All right, thank you. I know you're out doing fire inspections.
What's that, ma'am?
I said, I know you're out doing fire inspections.
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions?
No questions.
All right, you have a good day.
Thank you.
Oh, wait a second, wait a second. Erna Bright, he's here from, he does the president for the Fire Association. And he did have one talk that he wanted to bring up about the fire tax.
Mr. Bright?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Dr. Riddick, Mr. Wilson. I would, you probably have a little handout of three pages that I sent to the county manager for you to look at with this.
Is it under volunteer fire department or?
It's Gates County Fire Fee Request, I don't know.
I don't remember seeing it, but. Read it for us. I'll be trying to find it, go ahead.
I don't know, but it's here somewhere. I come before you today, we've talked about the funding for the fire departments, try to up the funding to get us where we need to be. In 2018, I did a presentation for the same thing, so we'll try again. As you know, we have a fire fee in the county that's assessed per the value of the house, and that was with the legislative bill, House Bill 900 in 1999. And it's based on a sliding fee to the property values of each residence. And they run $40, $50, $60, and $75. That was in 1999 when this was written. And in comparison, just a few things, turnout gear, a coat and pants in 1999 was $1,300. Today, today it's $3,285. A helmet was $125, it's $395 now. Boots were $75, they're $435 today. Gloves were $16, they're $100. Now, a new cancer hood that we have to wear for flashover protection, they were $18, they're $135 now. And that's a very important part of our ensemble, and I say that as a cancer survivor too, from firefighting. And I wish we'd have known those hoods were available, but they haven't been. To outfit a firefighter today in his turnout gear is $4,350. And that's only good for 10 years or depending upon the use, it might not be last but two to three years. And that's not an expensive set of turnout gear. The cylinders, air packs that you see wear on our backs that we have to wear on a fire 22 years ago, they were $1,600. Today, $9,495. And again, they're good for 10 years or 15 years. You can have them retrofitted. All those cylinders have to be tested every five years, it's $20 per cylinder and there's two, two per air pack that you have to have. So, and they have a shelf life, use life of 15 years now. You have to test your air if you've got a compressor. That's $400 a quarter. You have to have your compressor tested, that's $1,700 every year. And I'm kind of hitting some of those little things. And from our department, phone and internet service is $1,900 a year. Electricity's $2,700, rounded in all, water, $450. The big one, one of the big ones, workers' comp insurance for the vehicles, $22,460. That's one of the things you don't think about, but we have to maintain insurance, the replacement for the trucks, the gear, the radios, the pagers, that sort of thing. Truck maintenance averages about $8,000 a year. Fuel, you know, I feel for the farmers right now and anybody else, but I topped off three engines last week, almost $250 of fuel. So, you know, we were paying before $2,666 a year for fuel, that won't cut it. All the hose on our truck has to be replaced by NFPA now every 10 years. That's $13,369 per truck. The good thing is, I talked with department insurance this week and they're not going to enforce that for the time being in North Carolina for our ISO rating. But our turnout gear, all those other things are part of our inspection for our ISO, even to keep our NIS rating. With that being said, our current fees don't come nowhere near close to do what we need to do to keep. And we're going, thank goodness, we'll have a fire academy, I hope, in the county, with the schools. I mean, that just made me jump for joy back there. And hopefully, we get some of those young guys in as our members, as the old people like me that wrote this first bill 22 years ago, help with them, so I've been in it a long time. But under the Section 153A, 236.1 for Count, Gates County Fire Protection Fee, we would like to increase these values, these prices. I know you're going to catch some political flak, and all my fees going to go up. Well, your insurance is still, you'll be making, most people that live within five miles or six miles of a fire station will be recouping their money with some left over. Now, if you're outside and you're in Class 10, talk to the person that sold you your property or where you live and put a fire department in Sunbury Fire District via Class 1, which never happened. We'd have to have a fire station every two and a half square miles, so think about that. Knofford, right now, is working on their one, and I know what they're having to spend. It's ridiculous, so it's a lot of money. What we're requesting is to either go however you see fit to do this, is go before the General Assembly and ask to amend that amendment, this statute, the 153A. I've talked with our senator and our representatives, the State Firemen's Association, Alamo Firefighters Association, and the Gates County Association. We have met and we have agreed now, is in all organizations. You know, well, my truck is 25 years old and there's nothing wrong with it, it might work. But if we have a wreck with that fire truck and we haven't had all the proper stuff that meets the occurrence of what it was at that day, we're liable for it. If the turnout gear is not replaced, me as a safety officer, if one of my firefighters dies, the fire chief, assistant chief, and myself are going to jail. And then I'm going to be looking to put some of that, I'm going to try to spread the love, so to speak, if I can on this. So, these are things we have to do, we're liable for those things. So, the increase, we hate to do it, but we have to do it. The market value of $50,000 or less, we would hope would go from 40 to 80 this year, next time around. And within 10 years, the ability to go to 90. The single-family, $50,000 above to $100,000 would go to 150. After that next 10 years, it would go from 50 to 100, we're paying $50 now, we'll take it to 100. Multiple-family dwelling is 60. At this time, we would like to go to 120, not exceed 170 in 10 years maybe. And multiple-story apartments, townhouses, et cetera, $300, now they're paying 100. So, if somebody is going to build an apartment complex and have townhouses or whatever that meet these codes of under 32 feet here in the county, they need to pay a little bit more because it requires more fire response, more, more things for us. Commercial facility, $75 is what they're paying now, we'd like to go to 150, not to exceed 200 in 10 years, providing that things don't change. And then a special clause in there, a facility that contains hazardous materials in bulk or year-round sprinklers, non-sprinkler storage with a heavy fire load, and that's kind of ambiguous, I know, they go up to $300, and it wouldn't affect too many of those. But we don't have sprinkler systems in the county now. A lot of businesses get by with it because of the square footage. And every family dollar, Dollar General doesn't have a sprinkler system and they skirt the rules. Am I right on this? They, the stuff comes in, they put it on the shelves, they're not storing it. But I guarantee you, if you walk into one in Sunbury today or over here, you can't walk down the aisles because we're putting up the stock, so they're not sprinkled. That's just a thing we have to worry about. In this, in the general statutes, the way it states with the fee that, in the statutes, we would like to keep the fund distribution like it is. I know four years ago, you wanted to put it under a tax and kind of divvy it out. I'm the past president of the Alamo Firemen's Association for three terms, of six years total. And I've been every fire department from Terrell County to Pudding Ridge, you name it, in these 11 counties that association. I've been to budget meetings and the first thing that happens is the fire department, pass the tank, you can go over there and check, is, okay, weeks from fire department, you're getting a new fire truck next year. Okay, they've got the price, if the county says, ah, we can't afford it, you're being backed off five years. We, we're to the point here, we can't, we can't wait. Most of our trucks are over 20 years old and coming up to be 25 years old as far as the engines. And we're looking at a 400. And we're looking at a $400,000, anywhere from $389,000 to $569,000 for just a pump, a tanker, $480,000. God forbid, a ladder truck, brand new, $1,250,000. So, so far, it'd be nice to have one, but it's an expense right now that, you know, I don't know that we can afford. We'd like to keep the funding broken down as it is now. But as per the General Assembly statutes, we require the fire departments to submit a year-end run report of the previous year. And we would suggest use FireBridge Elite, which you can, there was a copy of the reports of Sunbury in there, it can be printed real easily. Just go in, put in the dates, and it prints it out, and no more calls. And we go to more things than just fires. Motor vehicle accidents, power lines down, smoke detectors, CO detectors. Somebody lost motor vehicle accidents, we help extricate. So we're making, making a lot of runs. Sunbury is averaging about 105 calls over the last five years. And you, you know, it don't sound like a whole lot. A lot of them are false alarm, fire alarms, but it still costs to drive that truck to a false alarm. We're asking to keep the, to be able to be funded, or what should be according to the statute, is maintain a North Carolina Department of Insurance rating no less than a 9E or 9S. So if you were to lose your rating and go to 10, you wouldn't get any money. That's incentive to keep that money coming to your department. Report to the state. Fire, our fire reports in a timely fashion and manner after the call. I don't know what timely is, it takes a little bit longer, but most of us try to do our fire reports within three to four days. Make sure who is there, but ideally, it would be the same day. Maintain workers' comp and insurance on all fire department equipment. And when you meet these minimum check-offs, and our fire marshal might have other things to include in there, or you might want other things, but to get the money, you need to meet these standards. It's something to hold it to. Training. Right now, in a 9S, there's not a whole lot of training required, the minimums. But in our department, I know we've got probably nine, nine or 10 firefighters that are Level 2 firefighters like I am. And it takes a lot of hours. The school we're talking about here for the high school kids, that's the minimum in the state of North Carolina now, 265 hours of training. So it's a lot, not that much a volunteer can do. I've got two of my, my members now going through the academy in Currituck. And they're gone two nights a week and every other Saturday for the next year to get that training. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them now.
Well, I, when you were talking about to amending the General Assembly statute, you know, that is a time-sensitive thing. The General Assembly is not always in session.
Right.
It's getting ready to go back in a short session, but that is only to, is my understanding to consider legislation that has not, that has been filed but not acted upon. So, and then the General Assembly doesn't meet again until?
Fall.
Fall.
I think they could do a short, distant short session with an amendment. So I've been told by the State Firefighters Association. I don't know if that is doable or not. That's.
Yeah, I, I, that's my question. I don't know if it, because the short session is, they said it's going to be extremely short, and they were just considering things that have been left.
Yeah, the last time we got it, it was in a short session that did it. Now, I don't know about this time. We were behind the ball, ate ball, getting this rolling in the first of the year because of COVID and all these other things. But if we could at least ask, and I know the last time, the Institute of Government wanted to shift it back and put it in with the fees as they recommended, is taxes. We would, we would still like to keep it as this. It protects the fire department, protects the county, and we know this funding is guaranteed.
And it's 153A? Is that the right citation?
153A dash 236.1, I think. And I've got, I've got a copy of the original, several copies here, and that's what it shows here, the Amendment, Bill 900 at that time. Then it was re, it was rewritten three different times to get it to where we wanted it. It was read in April, it was read again in another short session.
Has it been read three times before it came?
Yes, it's been read three times. I know it's, it's close, it's, but I think it would be worth a try if you could, if you could have come to the agreement as the board to see what they would do. And Senator, our senator would, I think, sponsor it, and I think our representative would. I've mentioned it to both, so I think if they remember it, I think they'll, they'll help us out on this.
One question for me. On average, what does it cost to run your fire department for you?
It's costing Sunbury about $100,000.
Is that the truck payments and everything?
Yeah. We don't have a new truck payment. We have been exceedingly blessed by FEMA. To get FEMA money now, I kind of explained the process, you know that, and I won't take too much more of your time, but I write average of three grants a year for Sunbury. I have received a little over a million and a quarter in grants for our department over the last 15 years. We go up against a like-size department, like response. Demographics is how, how it's bid, how it goes out with the scoring. This year, there's $462 million as all FEMA was allowed for assistance to fire grant. That's divided in fours, rural, cities, suburban, and a combination sum of everything. And then that's broken down into size. So in Sunbury goes up, my grant is scored on the number of people I have that are firefighters certified, the number of people I have that are NIMS, and that was one of the things in this part, I had NIMS, TIMS, and ICS were scored, is the number of people who have that, were scored, a number of people that have FEMA qualifications. We have a FEMA team person in our department. We have paid firefighters that are FEMA certified. So all that comes into us, helps us, bump us up point-wise. But last year, I missed a engine by one, one hundredth of a point. So you're talking about the water system and all the things, you know, scoring, but when you've got 1 million departments going for $4 million, $400 million, and the average price of a fire truck is $500,000 for what most of them are requesting now, you're out of money real fast. So that's, and everybody don't qualify for it. FEMA is just, they're hard to deal with, but if you want their truck or their gear, you're going to be certified, and you're going to be taking classes, or we're not going to give it to you. It's just plain and simple. And most of the engines in Gates County that we would probably go for this year would be about $388,000 to $395,000. And you can finance it for five years to 10. Five years is a lower percentage rate, 10 years is at 5.85%.
Um, just a comment. You know, we request that we get reports from the fire department. We've only got one.
Ours is, I'm speaking secondhand, but our, our chief told me ours has been submitted. Now, whether, I don't know if it has or not.
He's.
Oh, okay, all right. I misspoke, but.
So I would encourage you to tell your, all our firemen in the different departments that, you know, that's, we only request so we know what, how.
And that was a part of the original contract.
Well, it was a part of the original contract, and we didn't have it, you know. This year, we've only had one. We generally have most, we've always had problems with one department, but this year is, you know, like a disease has spread.
But is there any other questions that I can answer?
I have a question. Who is the spokesperson for the fire departments?
Right now, I'm the spokesperson as president of the Gates County Firefighters Association.
I'm just checking.
I might be booted out next time when it comes time for elections again, but I, you know. But each fire department, the chief, assistant chief, it would come down the chain of command.
Okay. The volunteer fire departments are very important, especially in a rural county such as Gates County, you know. And I would suggest that you get with your colleagues and with a plan, something like Cradips was saying, a plan going forward of what you need and how we can, how we can work together to get, to meet those needs. I know you have grants out there. But this is not, I don't think this is, this is doable just to try to get a truck or whatever you're trying to get without a plan to get them, and so that we can see, if possible, how we can assist the volunteer fire stations. We can't lose y'all. And we want you to be fully funded, we want you to be fully equipped, resources and equipped with, you know, I can see, I took a lot of notes, because I've heard it before, because I've talked to you before.
Yes.
And he was gracious and gave me a tour of the fire department. I enjoyed it. He wouldn't let me drive a truck, though.
Probably wise.
Yeah. But we need to, to better understand what your needs are, and we need it in writing so that we can see what's needed for these fire departments in Gates County to keep them up to, you know, code, that use, whatever. And I don't think we have that.
Now, that's why it was put in here, is I went to other departments in the counties, 11 counties around, they submit, you know, a five-year plan, or 10-year plan, or two-year plan.
That's what Gates County needs. We need to, across the board, as county manager, across the board in all these departments, they need to start planning out instead of, you know, reactive. You know, something happens, we, like firefighter, we jump to the, you know, like fire jumpers. They really do need to plan out. I know you talked about that before. We need, we need to plan out in all departments a three- to five-year plan, especially when it comes to finances and funding, because we just can't keep, continue to have you stand here or whoever, and here we go.
Yeah. And this, this is new to us about doing that. We've never done it, it's never been required. And I'm, my previous job, before retirement, my department had a budget, you know, that we knew we were going to spend this much, that much, and all of our department heads got together and submitted it up, up the line. It's, it's easy, it's an easy thing to do, but it's something we've never done in the past.
Okay.
And from this point on, we could very easily do that.
So your request today, and I'm going to let you go, is for increase in?
Fire fee.
That's your, that's your request?
That's our request, to these amounts that we put in there. And that would, it might, could fund a truck for somebody within a year or so for financing. It would be, it would be close. If you went to the max, it could, but if you start, where the suggesting starting is, if you went to the max, that would put us at the level that the General Assembly says, okay, we're kind of skirting the issue. But they still leave it as open funding up to the expense and what it costs to operate the fire department to deliver the service, is how it's in the statute. And I have one other quick comment. The fire academy they're talking about, I had looked at some grants to help build a training facility for the fire departments and the school. And FEMA's no longer funding them. I was told by their director that there were still some American Recovery Funds for the 503C, 504 entities, which are the fire departments. It has to come through the county, and that type of funding could fund a training center to help the school and our departments. And that's a part of our rating system too, would help us, bump us up on our ratings.
No more questions? Thank you for a thorough report.
Thank you.
Inspections, Edgar Mitchell. Is he here?
He's in.
Oh, there he is.
Been sick for five minutes.
That's all it's going to take.
Good morning.
Two and a half, be all right, right there.
We're not asking for anything new, just increased a little bit for fuel charges. Other than that, everything's in power like usual.
See, all, all items recommended. Any questions?
No questions, but, but at least a comment. Across the board, and several commissioners from other counties, myself are discussing this. The inspections have normally been 50 bucks, is that right? About $50 for, for home inspection?
For fees?
Uh-huh, for fees.
Oh, we're. Last time I did a study, about three years ago, we were in the normal, the average, and what we used was an 1,800 square foot house. And to get a T-pole building, plumbing, electrical installation, to get all the permits, we were coming in about $1,200 to $1,300 for all those permits. Which, like I said, is about average for the key sound county.
We've got an expert on the matter now. Current expert.
Our, our minimum amount, you come in and get a shed or something, is $35. But yeah, like I say, our, our plumbing is based on how many fixtures, our building is based on square footage of house, our electrical's square footage, our mechanical's how many units. So it depends on the extravagance of the house. The more we have, basically, the more we have to inspect, the more it's going to cost. But the more work we, I do, the more we collect for the county.
Very well.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Edgar.
Planning and zoning?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Planning and zoning's budget has, nothing has really changed this year, increased as well, except for our fuel, for our vehicle, of course. Other than that, everything has stayed the same as well this year. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Take two minutes to, to explain to me about GIS.
GIS.
Because I keep hearing from you and from Chris Hill.
Yes, yes. GIS, we have that basically contracted out, and it is hosted on the web by Atlas from Wilmington. If there's any special projects or layers that need to be created for any other department besides ourself as well, that is an extra cost. An example of that, I believe, a few years ago, emergency services had to contract out some fire districts, basically, to have them mapped out. I think that came in around, in between $22,000 and $25,000. So if you need any special projects or anything mapped out for the county, we have to pay extra for that as well. And I can't think of anything else for the county that will, that is good to pass on for, for anything is to have mapped out, things mapped out, able to find. That's where we have a lot of phone calls that people want to know, where can we get that layer? You know, if they're working on anything for the county, any contracts or anything that they're looking for. We're fortunate that our photogrammetry and satellite is done by NC State. They fly that every four years and update for us. So we're fortunate in that, because that would be a really high cost in the hundreds of thousands, even more if, if you're a large geographic area. And we are large, and it changes quite frequently. Also, you know, if you need any mapping that we send in each month, the mapping for any parcels that are updated, we have to send that parcel maintenance in. And we, we strive, I mean, we're all busy. I know every department is busy, and I'm not just speaking for myself, I don't do that. We have a lot that needs to be worked on this. Our county is, we're old, we're an old county. I mean, we have a lot of parcels that aren't even, have never been mapped. You have old deeds that are based on the old peach tree. That's gone. That peach tree is not there. We can't magically go out there and survey something and say, we know where that line or that, that pin could be, that's gone. And we try to update that constantly, though. We do our best. And we want to make sure that our maps are correct, but there's no county that's 100% correct. That, that would be far-fetched to ever think that. But we do. We, we want to make sure that is out there. We, we want to make sure that is out there for the customers and the citizens when they need something. So, I mean, that's just, that's my thought and that's, that's a fact, the things we try to do each month. And when you have maps and deeds and things that are conveyed each month, and we've had a lot of transactions, we have not slowed down during the pandemic. That is one thing that did not happen. People bought, sold, upgraded, whatever you want to call it, for lack of a better word, I guess. That is one thing that kept moving along. So we're constantly updating that and trying to keep that in line. Addressing, that is something that our department inherited. There's a lot of addresses that are incorrect. We're trying to help, you know, tax also is updating their files as well. And that's something that only Chris can do. I mean, the tax role, if I'm not mistaken by statute, I don't want to speak for him, but we've kind of discussed that briefly. It's only something that his department can correct. But we have our address list and planning and a layer that's there. So we need to update all those as well. There's some things that are, you know, misspelled, incorrect addresses, and that works with 911. So we have to help them update their files too with their vendor. So we have all these vendors. We've got a lot of things and a lot of parts and pieces that need to come together, be more efficient. Should be done. We have a lot of people asking for that information. If you're talking about the water system, be nice to map that too. I believe Edington's working on that right now too. Need to do that. That's my opinion. I mean, that's up to you ultimately. But if you want to do those things, you need to have that information. There's not a better standard operating procedure than having a really good map.
You said that NC State is, does some mapping, aerial mapping?
They do the mapping for the entire state. They have something that we send in constantly to updates on North Carolina One Map. And they fly.
And that doesn't cost us?
No, that does not cost us.
Is there a, some update that we haven't talked about that maybe needs to be done every 10 years that we need to be concerned about that, that does have a cost?
No. As far as the photogrammetry and the overhead, the satellite imagery, they do that every four years. And the state, fortunately, we benefit from that, that overhead imagery and the satellite imagery.
So there's nothing down the road that we need to be 10 years or four years down the road?
Not for the satellite imagery, not for the overhead imagery that we get. That's done every four years and the whole state benefits from that.
I'm thinking about things like land use, all of that, you know, the stuff that we did a few years ago. Does that have a life to it, a shelf life that some of that stuff has to be done again?
Not for us. The parcel updates are what we have to do and we, we provide them with that here. Our parcel files are updated to North Carolina One Map. They do the overhead imagery. If there's any special projects, you would have to do your own. But NC State, if you wanted to do something in between that, you would have to pay for that. But every four years, they fly that over. Any storms, you know, FEMA can pay for that too. Or any, any storms, like hurricanes come over, they're going to fly that because they want to see what's changed. You know, what's the coastline changed? What has changed the topography of anything that has possibly washed out the sea? You know, let's say we lose that. So you may benefit from that in between. You never know. Because we'll have to immediately go in and do damage assessments, new zoning, inspections. You know, we'd all be involved in that. But there's, as far as satellite imagery, unless we had a special need at that time, we would have to pay for that. But that's updated every four years and we benefit from that. We have to send our information in constantly to update that. So we, we have to have our vendor send that in as well. So we do that.
When I hear people say, you know, there's a problem with IGIS, sometimes with farmers, you know, everything's computerized now and, and all that. And it is because some of the land has not been surveyed.
Yes.
And gradually, we were hoping to eventually work out all the kinks, but I know we haven't.
No, no. And as we get new surveys or people buy property, they, the banks typically will require them to do that. So we will send in our surveys and they will update our GIS system with that. So that is sent in. But if, I mean, if we had to do that under a contract for us to do it, you know, say as a county, that would be, that would be something that you could consider. And again, I think another county is doing it right now, doing some surveying where they are not having the benefit of having updated surveys sent in or doing some research, you know. But there's, again, there's a lot of parcels that we have just deeds for. And again, you don't have the information. But yes, we could benefit from, you know, having a mapper. A lot of our counties have mappers and GIS folks. We don't. We have to send it off and depend on a vendor that's in Wilmington right now. So we're doing it as we go. And we're doing, I mean, it's a good job. We've got the best thing we, we can do.
And of course, every time we clear up a problem, that's one less. I mean.
That's true.
Hopefully eventually get it all done.
Yes, little by little. It has improved, definitely.
Because I remember tax administrators in the past would say, when they tried to go through, like this revale or something, and there would be spots that were not tight.
Exactly. There could be holes. They'll call it some holes.
There are always holes.
Yes, always holes. And again, I've asked, you know, do every county have, do they have this problem? And they say, oh, yes. Nothing's 100%. But you, you strive, you really strive and try to perfect that.
We're doing a good job.
Yes, we are.
Doing a good job.
I think you find every inch of mine.
Yes.
So. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Administration of Finance, Tim Wilson and Kim Outland.
Good morning.
Good morning.
A couple of things I just wanted to hit on or clarify that are in your budget book. Going back to the telecommunications budget versus what's in your book as E911. Currently, and in the past practice has been to have the telecommunications and emergency management in one budget, but they do have two different functional codes. So this year, we are breaking those out. It doesn't change the organizational chart, but just so you can see the cost of how much it takes to run emergency management versus what it takes from the general fund to run the 911 center. The other budget that says E911, those are the funds that we receive from the 911 board that are eligible items. Telecommunications is what the general fund has to pay for ineligible items. So I just wanted to, to point that out because that is different for this year. I know we just discussed having a two to five-year plan. Currently, we have started working on that. The county will have to do a reconsideration request by the end of August because our funding has been greatly reduced because of what hasn't been spent out of those funds. So we will, we will be working on, on that as, as well. But we have tried to spin down the fund balance within that fund so that we don't get further reduced. And the other, the other item, if Mr., Mr. Bright could email me the fees request, it is not, it is not in, in your book, so there's no need to search for it. And currently, the way that we allocate the dollars that we, we do receive for the fire protection fees, it's an equal distribution except for, I believe it's the one that's in Cora Peak. It's a, just a hair fracture, smaller amount than the other fire departments. So I just wanted to point out a couple of those items. In the admin finance budget, it's mostly the same of what our current budget is. The only items to note, the HR position that was approved at the last meeting was not in our budget because we had already finalized the budget at that time. So you won't see that in the information you have in your budget book now. And the line item in our budget for the IT expense line that Warren will be presenting in just a minute. Right now, I have everything under this one line item if it's for the general fund. Whatever is approved by the board will then get split up into each of those individual departments of what's been approved. But for the ease of presentation, it's in the one, one line in our department budget. Are there any, any questions?
I'd just like, I'd just like to say that I, I appreciate the, the modification of those line items. You split them out. It's easier to find, it's easier to find things. And they're appropriately assigned. They're not, like you said, they're not clumped together. You have to figure out what's in there. And I think it'd help the department heads too, to see what's in there for their department. It's the way it's gotten, you have it split out now. So thank you for, you and your staff, I thank you for that.
I think it'll take us this year to get used to the revision to, for everyone, for the, the chart of accounts. But yes, it was, there were things that were lumped together and just things evolve over time and need to be revised. So that's why you don't see some history on some line items because it was put in another line item in a prior year. So, but thank you.
You're welcome. I just want, again, I, I want to thank you and your staff at the finance administration and Mr. Wilson for working on this. It's so, it's, it's a lot better than what I've seen. And I know you worked hard on it and I know you brought some of your experiences to this. I recognize from higher education. You can't fool me. That's where you got it from, East Carolina, didn't you?
Yes. Yes. Any other?
Any questions?
I'll piggyback on that too. Good job. And thank you for including these notes in here. Because I've learned so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Cur, Mr. Curry, IT.
How's everybody?
Fine. How are you?
The IT budget, I have it written out, I guess it's three sections. I have kind of a hardware section, a current services section, then some new services. For the most part, the hardware section is a mixture of hardware and software that just pertains to replacing out aging or aged equipment. I think the thought process is that we'll try to get to a five-year rotation. But that's going to involve replacing out equipment that's aged, that have, may have been in the past been purchased by use. And maybe the money spent that way, kind of maybe equipment that is not as critical as other equipment may not have had much money spent on them. But to get to a point where we can get to a five-year rotation, the suggestion will be that we just kind of have to start making our purchases based on, not on how much used, but kind of try to purchase equipment. We can grow into kind of buying high-end equipment and not saying this department uses computers more than this department. And then kind of let that equipment grow in. So that's kind of going to start just replacing devices all across the board to get to that. That's why some devices may not be at the current five-year rotation, but they may have been bought with lower specs in mind in the past based on the usage. So we're trying to get all the way across the board, purchase new devices that we can grow into. There's some software purchases in there just as far as backup software. There's some network and equipment that we do want to try to upgrade to kind of build a better foundation for the overall networking structure. And then just to mention the, the cost, our estimated, it's kind of hard to put a precise cost on the technology equipment. So, so we, prices may have been estimated anywhere from 15 to 30% just to kind of make sure we don't, when it comes time to make the actual purchase, that we haven't under-budgeted ourselves and kind of get into a bind there. The current services section is just a brief list of what we are paying for now that consists of our email services. There are some department software purchases that we're doing. And then a few of the Microsoft Office purchases that we are currently paying for. The new services section is kind of a mixture of both. We have made recommendations to, for a new email service. We made recommendations to, to increase our internet to some of our locations, primarily the main admin location and our DSS location. We've included some security training that we want to start doing that will definitely benefit all of our users, regardless of what jobs we're doing. And some of those bundles will include some additional email filtering services, whatnot. So we'll gain a little bit more in addition to what we'll gain by moving to a new email provider. There are some warranty purchases in there just for some of our higher-end servers that we would try to start purchasing some extended warranties, try to get a little bit more life out of those to, to have service, immediate service if we have issues with those. Some of these services, as the new services, if they are purchases, then it will remove some of the current services that we have, mainly the, the email provider and some of the Office 365 licenses that we're currently paying for. That will, across the board, give everybody a new email platform. We'll all be on the same platform. We'll, we'll, we'll definitely have more storage options. We will get some, gain some email benefits as far as additional archiving and backing up. It'll just be a more structured, solid email than what we have now. Then everybody will be on the same platform regardless if we're using email on our phones or in our offices. It'll give all of us the option to, as we're county employees, to, to use that email even on other devices outside from here, just as a benefit of that, as long as we're our county employees. So I think it'll be a benefit for all, it'll be a little expensive, definitely from what we're paying for, but I guess just at some point, we, we kind of always had to move on to, to bigger and better things. And so I think in the long run, the cost and the benefits will definitely outweigh what we may consider a cost savings now, but then just, just kind of, just not as practical an email service now than, than what we do need in the future. That is just kind of a rough breakdown without trying to go through every single line and every single department. But hopefully you have that in front of you. If anybody does have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
I have a question. Because I don't know if I have a question. The county's website, where is that held? Who, who, where is that? Is that under your department?
Right now, the past, it has been under the admin as far as the county manager's assistant. They do the posting, they do the updating, to kind of have a central source to where, we just don't have people all across the board going in and trying to make changes. So because the admin can, can kind of be directed from the county manager, it, it kind of falls into that. I have helped in the past if there's just been an immediate need or if someone has been out. But to try to limit access to that right now, that, that falls under the county manager's assistant, put to the board position.
I think we talked before, county manager, about the website needs work.
It's, it's had some improvements. I mean, aesthetically, in a way it's organized, it's better. But yeah, it could still use some work in terms of the provision of information that, that it does.
It's going to be more important now than ever because of what we're doing in the county. We have to get the word out what we're doing. People need to go to that website for a plethora of things as far as trying to find out who's doing what, you know, the marketing and branding. We need pages that we don't have. And just some food for thought as we move forward. That website needs to be more robust with county information, user-friendly. Where is it? Where I think it is, it's not there. I'm like, where is it?
Right.
So I'm just, I'm, I'm, I'm an end user. I'm just speaking as an end user, not a, not a, not a professional webpage person, developer, but as an end user. It needs work. It's, it's improved for the last year or so, but we still need work on that website, especially talking about technology.
We need a higher teenager. They can do a lot of stuff.
Right. Most, most websites, websites for the most part are just templates.
They are.
You have a template and a place order here and a place order here. You know, you have a template and a placeholder here and a placeholder here, a spot for picture. This spot is for information, this spot may be for this. And I guess it just depends on the cost and what we want to spend to have a more customized type of website that we may have more input in to say, well, your template is here, but we want to put something else here. And, and for some of the providers, um, those, those templates are kind of set in stone. So, we can't say, well, no, um, this top portion is for pictures. Well, we don't want pictures there. So, well, that's, we want to put it here in the middle of the page and we want to do this. And, you know, unless we go out to a, you know, more customized service, that, that we can really say, basically, we want you to build us a website and this is what we want. And then you start from scratch, kind of, and build it for us, which will be a cost, of course. But, but for the standardized, standardized most part of it, uh, we're, we're just, you know, we get, we're provided a template and we have placeholders where we can put information at. And, and there is some customization, but for the most part, we can't, you know, we can't recreate their template.
Right. Just want to put out for food for thought. Uh, do you have a three to five-year plan for technology?
I do not.
Has to be on thirty-minute intervals. Has to be on thirty-minute intervals.
Everything would change.
That Warren I've talked about is, is trying to get, you know, could, you have a lot of confusion. We talked about, you know, five years is a common rotation for a lot of your computers. And, and right now, what we're going to have to start doing, and started a little bit with this budget, and it's like, okay, maybe we're going to do this one a little bit, one year extra. And we're going to get an extra year out of that one, so that that replacement cost becomes more of a constant in your budget. Instead of it sitting here and all of a sudden you have a big block that you have to try to. So, you know, over periods next, but the first fiscal years is that, that's the objective, is try to get that replacement schedule, um, to get it on a five-year. But it's going to take a little tinkering to do that over the next few years. So that becomes much more just like you budget for debt service. It becomes kind of a, a constant that's built into your budget, instead of, oh, this is the year we have to come up with X number of more dollars, so to speak.
It's a good plan.
Which kind of starts with, to, to start with, the foundation is getting everything kind of replaced first. So we can say, okay, now we've got everything, within one or two years, everything is one year old or less than a year old. And then we can say, okay, they're all high-end devices. Then at this point, we can kind of say, if we, even if we look at departments then and say, these are critical departments, maybe just a tad bit more so than others, that, okay, this department, we can get by with another year because we've purchased high-end devices that we can grow into all across the board. Instead of in the past, may, maybe being, looking at it as trying to be economical and save money and saying, well, this department maybe only works three days a week. We could spend less here and use that here. And then we run into a position now where we have some computers that are aged out way more than others. And then we want to replace. And then we, we've got now, try to spend the money to get everything on the same platform, everything kind of a high-end device that we can grow into as the technology grows. And then kind of have a foundation to say, now, our five-year plan can be, we can, we can do critical departments, we can do this. Well, that's, uh, not as critical a department, but hey, that, that's a high-end device still that we still have growth with. And, and then we can kind of purchase and move from there, even if that involves possibly, you know, buying, um, down the line, buying extended warranties on our devices if we want to say, hey, we spent money upfront for these devices, we can buy a, a, an extended three-year warranty, you know, for, for, for three-quarters less than what we paid for the original device. If we want that to be a way to, 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 to say that next year, we're going to replace so many now and so many later. And then try to have everything still covered un, under some kind of protection or service protection if needed.
I say, I say to you also that we need a technology analysis.
Yes, I, I would agree.
You know, just not go and throw stuff at it. We need some type of analysis. MCNC is a good place to start. They need to do it for free.
Talking about the, you know, speaking about the website, that is for the end user and communication. But I think, um, since county managers have been here, that we've all indicated that the communication between our departments, like when you're looking at something and you need to talk to a different department about it, everybody can get to the same, same information. I think if, if I remember correctly, we all saw that as a priority.
Yes, we did. So.
So, that needs to be, that needs to be top shelf stuff.
Now, when we had the, the companies here, on eighteenth, and we had all these issues with, uh, we couldn't even connect with them. That is not acceptable.
Right. And, and some of that was, um.
Oh, I know.
Yeah, yeah. Now, I won't get into too much detail, but, but, so we do have third-party services that, that, that we benefit from with some security issues. And sometimes those issues pop up and gets in the way of some things. Some of the collaboration that we do as far as having meetings and having other people participate in our meetings, it, it's just a platform that as that need grows, we, we can kind of say, okay, now we want these services, kind of like with this video room. My understanding was, kind, kind of needed a foundation to start the project. And it's kind of hard to say, well, we want this and this, and, well, we wanted to do this, 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 and this, and this, and this, and this, and this. We, we, we kind of say, okay, well, give us the foundation, you know, there's a cost with that. And, okay, right now, the, the, um, basic needs is we want this, we want to be able to have a decent video setup and audio and, and give us something to build on. And I think that was kind of how the process started.
I, I think we've learned, lessons learned. Now we know what we need.
Right. And then we can, at least we know what we are asking for, because if we say, well, right now, what do you want? Well, we want it to do five hundred things. And then five years later, we realize, well, we only really, we're doing a hundred things at the same time and maybe fifty other things. So the other three hundred and fifty things, we're not hardly even using. So, I, I, I think that was just kind of the outlook, um, for, for my, a bit of involvement with that project was just kind of, hey, give us a foundation. Give us something that's definitely better than what we have now. And I think that was met. And then it's kind of, okay, now, as we need new services, as we need, um, add-ons to, to make it more efficient, you know, then we can say, well, what's our plan? Okay, now, in the future, we may want to have thirty more people join or sit at the meetings or do this. Or sit there, okay, well, now we know that and then we kind of build on that, so.
Thank you, Warren.
Thank you.
You exceeded your five minutes, Warren.
Yeah.
Give him his fifteen minutes of thing. He says, so that'd be quiet the whole time. He got to get on, he got to get on camera, so.
He's never on camera, so it's nice to have him on camera.
Water sewer, Tim Wilson. Jonathan. His name is Jonathan.
He's going to be all right. Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Brad Arnold. I'd like, I haven't formally introduced myself. I like to introduce myself. Been here about a week and a half, so I'm still kind of getting my feet wet.
And what was your last name?
Arnold.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, this, this, this budget, it's, it's also basically a, a maintenance-type budget is what, what we're looking at here. Yeah. I, I think, you know, what's probably one of the big things that, that's not reflected in the budget that the board will be needing to make some decisions on in the, in the coming year is, is going to be wastewater. And that, that ties indirectly to your, your interest in, in economic development. That, you know, if we're taking the major and the most important first step in securing a site, now we need to make sure that, that we have all necessary infrastructure to support that site in order to make it attractive and competitive in, in the world of economic development. And one of the major elements that we, we need to address in, in terms of that, that infrastructure is, is wastewater. And so, as, as I mentioned before, that, that would start off with basically a discussion by the board to try to determine how much capacity that we may be looking for or need for our economic development purposes, uh, meeting with an engineer, and then securing the, uh, the services of an engineering firm to, to come up with our, you know, what are, you know, what wastewater treatment options best meet our needs in terms of our local conditions and, and the type of gallon-per-day treatment that, that we're looking at. It's a little, little hard to, to put a price tag and, and put that in, in the budget at this point, because that's still a discussion matter that we need to address with, with the board.
And, and, Tim, also, with that being a high cost, any movement in that would be a high-cost item, which we'd be looking for assistance from grants and infrastructure stuff?
Yeah. Obviously, we would be looking at, at some grants, might be able to find, you know, something just under any rural economic development planning that might hopefully include things like infrastructure studies. But, you know, as far as trying to assist with that, uh, and, and with that, is the one thing, as, as I'm sure you know, that, you know, this, this comes out of, out of a, of a different fund from, from the fees that, that you would, uh, collect. So, you know, there would be, it would not be your, your tax rate that would be impacted by this. It would be looking at, uh, you know, talking about the setting of rates, uh, you would probably want to be looking at, you know, what are your, your different means of paying for financing? And then your different options for paying, uh, uh, the debt service on something like that, which obviously is, is going to be an examination of, of the rates that, that we're charging.
It, it goes back to what I said before about sustaining, sustainability. Once you repair it, you got to sustain it. So, you need to start thinking about that, because fee for service, that's what it is. And that's, it's just what it is. Once we repair it for this grant, debt service, or whatever, we've got to sustain it. So we got to look at the rates we're charging. It may be all right, I don't know. That's why you do our rate studies, figure out, okay, this is what it costs to, to operate, what's the, what's the alignment of the fee?
And, um, there, North Carolina Rural Water, if you remember, that organization, they can, they offer free services if you're a member. They can assist us with that, hopefully free of charge or minimal charge. Something I could look into.
Please do.
And what was that, the rural?
Brad, you're saying that they could provide us with the information that we're, that, we're saying that we could use, like an analysis?
Yes, sir. Free of charge, hopefully.
Technical assistance, so we know what we're facing. And then we have to, I think the county manager mentioned, uh, engineer to come in.
Yeah.
And that would be rather based?
Well, they're out of, up around Greensboro is where they're headquartered at, but they serve all of North Carolina.
Because obviously, we want to, you know, we'll, we'll be done going through a planning exercise for the, for the property that, that the county has purchased, so we can try to get a, a handle on what the water and the wastewater demands for that proposed development may be. But the county needs to look beyond just that one hundred and forty-four acres. You know, we have to think that we'll be successful with that development and serving, uh, you know, a further area up and down that one, that one fifty-eight corridor, hopefully. And obviously, um, because I think it may have happened with your first plant, you, you found yourself got, you know, you weren't able to expand it, you were, you got kind of landlocked. And so, we would definitely want to make sure that, that whatever wastewater option that we went with, that we had a site and that we designed a facility that both allowed for the expansion of that system for future growth. So you wouldn't find yourself in that situation again.
Brad, while you're doing your analysis and contacting people in, across the state, uh, looking to the Department of Environmental Quality. His name is Marcus Cruz. Marcus Cruz.
You have a spelling of that Cruz? Spelling of that Cruz, is it?
I think it's C. Something like that. I got, I've talked to him last fall about something he called. And he offered to help us.
Is he on any particular side of water, wastewater, or is he just?
Water and wastewater. I do believe. I talked to him and his supervisor. They called. I got in touch with him through our representative.
The book of knowledge, isn't it?
Yeah, I think so.
Literally the little button.
You see, you're reading, let me know.
Brandon, his name is Marcus, M-A-R-Q-U-I-S, Cruz is C-R-U-I-S-E. And he is wastewater and water on the policy side. And also, um, Jamila Hawkins, if you, if you send me an email, I'll give you all these contact information.
Okay.
They were, they were willing to come here and I says, nope, we're not ready for you to come and sit and talk to the county manager. We didn't have anybody in the office, one thing. But they're willing to come here and take a look at and give some information about possible grants and things of that nature. And yes, I have a little black book.
And it's filled up, too.
Yeah. I don't know if it's good to have your name in that book or not. And it's environmental.
Department, Department of Environmental Quality. Water and wastewater. Treatment systems, collection, expansion, repairs, it's all my notes, but anyway. I told you, we have a forty-year system that needed help. This is what we could, might could do. So, anyway, I'll send it to you. I know you got an email.
Looks like all items were recommended.
Yeah, all the items were recommended.
I plan to have you on board.
Yeah, we'd like to welcome you. Yeah, tell us a little something about yourself. We hadn't met you yet.
Um, I come from the town of Eaton, there about twelve years. Got a lot of experience in water and wastewater, but, uh, working along with the state and with Rural Water. We were, we just upgraded, well, upgraded several things. We upgraded all of our water plants about two years ago. We just done about five million dollars worth of sewer upgrades within the town. That's a pump station, with gravity lines, force mains, all that kind of good stuff. And we are current, well, they are currently in the process of fixed network and meter-reading system.
Did you have any input in that? Was that, you just hired it, hired that out? Or did you have input in the, the water meeting, meter room?
We had, we had input. We, I had input in it. We went through a national meter. Fixed network, they talk back and forth, and the meter actually talks to the tower and they send it to the building. So, a person never has to go to the meter unless you're responding to a faulty meter, like a tampering call, leak, leak alarm, something on those lines.
Brad, you saying there's, you know, how the power companies, they ride to the sites where the meters are? Do you even have to do that? Or is it, is true satellite?
Yeah. They talk back and forth.
Wow.
They have a lot of wear and time.
I don't, I don't.
But I didn't know that was already available.
It could be done in Gates County, but it would probably be astronomical.
Yes.
Being like real high.
And Eaton also opted to change their own meters, which saved them about one point four billion dollars. But it's very slow, very slow process of changing.
Take what a contractor can do in eight months will take you five, six years to get it done.
And that's the kind that you can just ride by and?
Well, actually, those, they talk back and forth, you don't even have to.
Okay, oh my goodness.
Wifi. Extreme wifi.
Or could also go online and they could actually look at their water.
Watch it grow.
See when their good time was, when it's slack times, and all that kind of good stuff. And I have already talked to, uh, that contractor about Gates County. And, uh, he needs a little bit of information. As soon as I get it, I will get it to him and try to get somebody down here to look. Probably, it'll probably be a drive-by system here, being Gates County so big.
I think that's what Quayman's has.
Yes, ma'am. That's what they have. Chawan County also has it. So, as soon as I get all my ducks in the run, get information, I can send it to him and then come down and. and then come down and maybe do a study and see.
All right. What kind of certifications do you have?
All.
All.
I have, uh, grade, grade four collections. I have grade one physical chemical, a H distribution.
Seawell, uh, cross-connection, backflow.
Good luck.
Have a lot.
We, we welcome you to Gates County.
Thank you. Glad to be here.
Good to meet you, Brad.
Nice to meet y'all.
Thank you.
We hope you sail a long, long time.
Well, um.
I hope I do, too.
That's the morning. Our, our morning was scheduled from ten to twelve-thirty. It is twelve oh nine, or twelve-ten. If there's not anything else for this morning, I'm going to, uh, rest, recess this meeting, not adjourn. And we'll be back at two o'clock.